So we should start the meeting at 6:01 PM if you want to. Are we recording and all online here, Darius?
Yeah, let me stoke the fire here. crank the engine or they say it. Now you're good.
Okay, we will call the meeting of the Deerfield Elementary School Committee to order on March 10th, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM. I do want to note that this is a virtual meeting and it is being recorded just for the record. And we will proceed with our agenda. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of February 9th, 2021.
I'll make my motion to approve the minutes.
One second there.
Okay. Is there any discussion or notations?
No.
Hearing none, I would call for a roll call vote. Ken Cutterback, yes. David Sharp?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes. You know, Mary, sometimes there's a switch on the top of the thing. If you can slide over the camera, sometimes that shuts it off. And on your top of your top, just a thought.
Okay. Next on the agenda would be the financial statement, sign warrants. As we know, the warrants have been signed as Shelley indicated in her financial report. And I know she said she had no glaring comments to make, but I didn't know if she wanted to speak this evening.
I'm happy to take questions if you have any. I did share the expense reports. And if you'd like the warrant number on record, Ken, I'm happy to read that.
No, I can note it into the minutes. It is part of your financial report that is will be attached to the minutes. What there were 15 warrants totaling, can't remember the amount.
Thirty-three thousand.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Does anything stand out, Kelly, at all? I mean, you might have asked that already, but I said that earlier.
Um, no, as far as this year's expenses, we're sort of means painting that line that we've been on where we have some savings from positions that weren't filled. And we're looking at right now, which we'll talk more about in the budget. But I'm looking at probably 90,000 in savings from this year's general fund that we'll be able to use in support of next year, which is primarily related to transportation and some vacant positions that Tina has been able to do without filling this year. But otherwise, you know, if you look at the expense reports, you're going to see some overages and some money still available in certain accounts. Those are washing each other out. I'm aware of all of the reasons why they are either high or low. We have had to move some things around and, you know, I think we're in good shape at this point.
Yeah, certainly our nursing, health services are certainly underwater and that's understandable for sure.
Yeah, and that was just in part from moving some things from different account lines. It's not necessarily, although there are some increased nursing costs because of the way that Meg Birch, our nurse leader, her position was structured this year in a different way than in prior years. So there is some additional cost there. I think that account is negative about 16,000 and it's primarily because I moved some things around. There was a support nurse paid from another funding source. And when I saw the opportunity to have some, we were going to have savings on general fund. I moved that around so that we could use some of the general fund savings money. So it shows an overage, but you know, technically we still have enough money in other lines to cover it.
Yeah.
You'll also see, for example, one of the areas that we do have money available. If you look at the librarian line, because we did not fill the librarian position, there's about 44,000 available there. So that's helping offset some of those overages on the other expense accounts. But it's, you know, there's nothing shocking happening in the budget that you all aren't already aware of. And we still have some COVID money, not from the town. The town, we have submitted everything for the Municipal Cares Act at this point. I did reach out to the town administrator, Casey Warren, about the possibility of requesting a little bit more money. But she said that the town needed to reconcile and see where things were at. And it's not actually requesting more dollar wise. We canceled a technology order because we couldn't get the product. We're actually under our original request. So the conversation was, okay, can we swap that technology for something else? And she just wanted to reconcile with the town accountant and see where other needs were at. But we have some state COVID money left that we'll be looking to spend by December 30th as well. So I feel like we're in decent shape.
Good.
Good. And it looks, yeah, it looks like the bill grew too, so that's good. Great, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Shelley, for that. The next item on the agenda would be public comment. We have two public comments. I believe everyone received a copy of an email from a concerned parent regarding the resource officer at Frontier Regional High School. I know it was submitted, and I'm assuming it was submitted primarily for Frontier, but the resource officer does, does visit the Deerfield Elementary School as well. So I will read this into the record and then I will get to our second comment, which will be Jennifer will be with you shortly. So from, this is an email dated Sunday, March 7th, 2021, 9:37 AM regarding the resource officer at Frontier. It is addressed from Rafael Santos via the public comment link to our site, to our meeting site. Members of the school committee, please accept this letter as a plea to not remove the resource officer at Frontier Regional High School. I understand the national concern regarding officer presence in public schools. However, those issues are unique across the country and in areas where oversight is lacking by school administrators, police departments and by the community. I'm not sure, and I could be wrong, but I haven't heard of or seen any concerns regarding officer presence at Frontier. My, from my understanding, Sergeant Ravish is well received by students, faculty and parents. As a parent of a student who has been a part of this school system since kindergarten is now, is now a junior, I'm concerned of the thought of this removal. In our experience, there have been two separate occasions where the current officer at Frontier has assisted my child and other students. I'm sure there's one, the only two occasions where he would need to be available to students. Both he and the assistant principal address serious matters professionally inappropriately, which needed law enforcement intervention, not only administrative attention. I'm not going to get into details, however, in both instances, the resource officer was sought out by students and by parents who confided in him and believed he would do his job, which he did. They didn't reach out to a teacher, principal, counselor, coach or school committee member. They went to the resource officer because they felt comfortable enough to bring the matter to his attention. I personally sought him out on both occasions because the matter needed to be addressed by him and school administrators only needed to be informed so they could monitor the situation. I can assure you that in both instances, things could have gotten worse or never, or never addressed, which would have been a complete letdown and disappointment in the lives of the students affected by the events, to include my child. A clear understanding between police departments, school administrators, faculty, students and parents should continue to be the focus when considering the position of a resource officer. The officer assigned to the school is a resource, quotation marks, and is an important asset to the community and school. Sergeant Ravish takes pride in his work, both at Frontier and in the community. I've been able to observe him interact with parents and students, which he considers his own. Those are his kids too, and the need to have an officer presence like him is extremely important. Deerfield Police Department and Sergeant Ravish have done a great job while with ensuring the safety of our students in Deerfield to the best of their ability. Please make a good assessment regarding this potential removal from our Frontier. I'd be very disappointed if anything were to happen to my child and a resource officer is not available. If and when that ever happens, I will be looking at the school committee to answer and deal with those tough questions I'd have. The budget should not get in the way of this important position either. Officer presence should make people feel safe in our communities, not uncomfortable. Unfortunately, there are too many issues going on that school administrators cannot handle without police involvement. Make the right choice and do not remove the resource officer. Thank you, Rafael Santos Jr., South Deerfield, Massachusetts. So. I think it's a pretty good summation. I don't know, Darius, if you have any comments or not. It's not a position we necessarily get to in too much depth at the Deerfield Elementary School budget level.
Right. I'll make sure, I'll reach out to Rafael to make sure that, he said it to Deerfield. He may have been confused on that. I realized that when I saw the thing, but I also realized that, you know, I can't change requests. And it was also a conversation, I think this conversation was happening at a media select board meeting or, or the such, Trevor, I don't. Deerfield Elementary does not, does not, does not support the resource officer.
Heard the comments.
Was that, sorry, Trevor, you broke up there, go ahead.
You still there, Trevor? Yeah, my internet's kind of breaking up, but yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hear me at all?
I can.
Okay, great. So I, I have not heard of a conversation to remove Sergeant Ravish. I know that we look to funding and we do get help from other entities to, to help with budgeting of that. I think it's a vitally important position and Sergeant Ravish does an amazing job. I have full confidence in him and I've heard nothing but great things from faculty, parents, teachers, you know, staff, students. So that's all I can lend to that.
Sure.
Yeah, so I don't know what that concern is in this particular fiscal year. Frontier passed its budget last night by the school committee and it was filled in there. So if Rafael are watching, it's, it's okay, it's in place for next year currently. So I appreciate the note and the kind words about Brian because he does do a nice job.
Yes, thank you, Darius. Jennifer Smith, parent and teacher. We reached out and said she would love to, like to comment or take advantage of public comment this evening. So the floor is yours, Jennifer.
Thank you. Um, I'll introduce myself, though many of you probably know me. Good evening, I'm Jennifer Smith, a fourth grade teacher at DES and a mother of a fifth grader at DES and a seventh and eighth grader at Frontier. Last July, I was given the opportunity to work on developing professional development for my colleagues in the elementary schools. With a small committee, we created two 10-week pathways to begin to reflect on identity, privilege and the history of systemic racism in our country. I'm so thankful that we are in a district that has taken on this work. It's not easy and because it is hard work, it can get messy. It is personal work and that too can get complicated. However, we keep going back and continuing to push through difficult conversations, see our mistakes and missteps, learn from them and try to do better. I'd like to thank Darius, Kim McCarthy and Tina for being in those difficult conversations and being open and committed to striving to do better, to create an anti-racist school district. At the last Frontier School Committee meeting, school committee member Judy Pierce asked to participate in the professional development that the teachers have gone through. In response to that request, I sent to all the committee members the first pathway of learning that the teachers and staff worked on in the elementary schools. I deeply appreciated her request to learn more and to do the individual work that can help keep our school district accountable to its mission and to be an inclusive and anti-racist school. One cannot be a passive participant in this work. We all have to continue our own personal growth in this area so we can ask the right questions for our children's education and for our community. I'm here to invite you to take part in the professional development that teachers were given. I would like to ask you to commit to going through one pathway of learning individually or as a group so that we can grow this work of creating an anti-racist school system, which would include an anti-racist school committee for the future of our community and for our kids. Thank you.
Wonderful. How do we go about doing that, Jennifer?
I'll send it to you. I can send you the pathway. Very, it's very, you know, it's easy to go through and clearly written out so that you just sort of follow through the sessions. There are questions to write about or talk about as a group. And so if you all agree, I would love to send that out to you.
Are they online?
Uh, yeah, it's a Google document that brings you through different videos, podcasts, articles. Yep.
Great.
Jennifer, thank you for doing that work and thank you for inviting us to share it and give us the opportunity to do it.
My pleasure.
Yes. I think I'm hearing a consensus that yes, we would like to have the pathway shared with us and we'll give it, well, I'll give it, you know, give it a try. I technologically, I'm, it's, it's interesting for me to try and do things on Google Docs and things, but I'm more than happy to give it a shot and see what, I would love to participate and become part of the process.
It's very user friendly. You just click on links and brings you right to videos or podcasts or whatever. There are lots of teachers at varying levels of technological ability. And so we tried to make it as easy as possible. So I'd be happy to send that along and thanks for making that commitment to the work.
Okay, and, and I will echo Carrie's, thanks for your hard work. It's a, it sounds like it's an undertaking that you have enjoyed and we are happy to have someone as committed as you take it, take it, take the bull by the horns and, you know, help lead the effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments anywhere? Tina, I keep seeing you nodding your head, so I didn't know if you wanted to say anything.
I'm nodding my head in agreement with you that Jen has been leading the way with a few other teachers on this work and thanking her for her commitment. I'm, she, I've learned a lot from her and I enjoy our conversations too. This work is, the pathways are pretty intuitive to follow along with. So I'm just nodding my head in agreement.
Okay, thank you. So, well, again, thank you so much, Jennifer. It's a wonderful outreach and I, I hope we all take advantage of it and.
I don't, I should have maybe emailed my statement. I don't know if you want it to put into the minutes also, but I can send that to you.
I can give a general summary of what you've stated if you want to. If you've got a written statement and want to forward it, that's fine. Also, we can add it as a document, but.
I'll do that.
Be noted in the minutes and the, the opportunity to participate in one of the 10, is it a 10-week path, pathway?
That's how it was developed. I mean, you can do it however you want to.
Right.
Um, so there are sort of 10 chunks to go through.
10 chunks, okay.
Great, that's great.
Very good, thank you. And that's a wonderful segue into our next item on the agenda, which is the Anti-Racism and Equity Committee update. And I see Jameson has signed in and I don't think it's because he wants to watch the whole committee meeting. So I'm assuming Jameson Isley is with us again to provide us on the latest update from that, that committee's efforts.
You are correct, sir. As much as I miss these meetings, I'm not going to come if I don't have to. So since I was last here last month, we've had a couple of pretty big meetings to talk about successes and challenges in this year. And to think about where we're going, moving forward into, into the future, you know, and also kind of to remind ourselves that we have not been doing this work as long as it may, might feel like we're doing. So to, to kind of recalibrate where our successes are in terms of the time we've actually spent really focused in on it, which is still, I think, by my count, less than 12 months. So we, one of the takeaways from the meeting is that communications kind of at all levels is challenging. And there's been a proposed monthly newsletter to go out to all staff, students, faculty, family and school committee members so that everybody stays in the loop around the district with what's going on with the committee. The School Policy and Procedures Subcommittee has been focused on reviewing our existing documents and will be shifting their focus to creating a playbook of policies and procedures for responding to race-based incidents. It was noted that students of color need to be centered in terms of communication and policy and that it's not about shaming students who might run afoul of, of the policy, but acknowledging and repairing harm done and bringing a sense of safety back to all of our students and families of color. Elementary professional development has been very well received. The elementary teachers now have a sense of common foundation and are feeling energized to tackle curriculum work. High school teachers are wanting a little bit more of an opportunity to do a similar deep dive and establish a common foundation for that same kind of curricular work, make it a little bit more substantial. And then our next steps are finalizing our PD proposal for school year 21, 22, and then really developing a clear roadmap for, for our long-term goals as a district. And they are going work. And so, you know, it's, it's been an interesting year to undertake this business with all of the zooming and, and kind of, it's been really kind of detached. And hopefully, as we go into the next year, we'll be able to do some of this work face to face and really, really build some strong bonds within the community, within the committee and within the community, stronger ones than the ones we have now, which aren't, which aren't weak. But, you know, it just will be nice to see people again. Are there any questions you want me to take back to the, to the body? This is like when I teach my class and I throw a question out there and it's just.
Yeah. This is Trevor, I have a question. What are your biggest obstacles right now that you're running into? As you're, you know, either dealing with, you know, these discussions, either with faculty or with students or, you know, kind of where you're at?
Well, I, I would have to say, I think that different bodies have different obstacles, you know, that I think the high school, it's a little bit more of a moving target. There, there's a, at the elementary school, there is kind of a containment in like the grade level with the teacher being kind of the one conduit of information, right? And then you get to the high school and you're, you're, you're diffusing that message out between all of those different disciplines. And it's been just in the sense of trying to get everybody going in the same direction, starting from the same place and, and and really, really, you know, I don't think we've had a problem with buy-in. But it is, you know, I think that's been a stumbling block.
Makes sense, thank you.
And, and then just, you know, I think when we do this work, we kind of want to solve all the problems right now.
Yeah.
And, and so another, it's been tempering our level of disappointment with what we've gotten done already, right? Because we want, we want to, we want to solve it, right? And make it better. And, and that, it just takes time.
Yes. Yep, setting the right expectation.
Exactly.
Being pleased with the work you're doing, yeah. Thank you enough for the work you're doing and everybody that's partnering on this.
Yes.
A lot to learn, thank you.
Well, you know, just to add a comment, it would be that from every, all the feedback we're getting, you know, in these meetings and in the community, there is progress being made. It just, it's not going to happen overnight as you, as you, as we all well know. So, you know, we certainly appreciate your efforts and the efforts of the committee and Jennifer and people throughout the, throughout the community that are working on this important topic and issue. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. You guys have a great night and we'll see you.
You too. Yeah, look forward to it, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Sure, bye, James. Yep, COVID-19 update?
Still there.
You what?
That's it, that's all I got, no. So, well, I mean, no, really, there's a lot, a lot has happened the last 24 hours on the COVID front in the sense of in education. I did send out, it's more, I sent out to all the school committee, if you had any chance to read my email I sent yesterday, the commissioner, let me do a step back first. COVID right now, the rate, the numbers are still very low. We're having successful pool testing. We do, you know, those watching, we do, are going to do another push to get our percentages up even higher. And, and they did extend the pool testing all the way to April break. Okay, so, so anyway, so that's been, that's been going well. And it's kind of, it's not, it hasn't been perfect. I don't have everybody just bidding yet, but I say yet because I think we can get more people to come on and do that. Trevor?
Question, how, how would one sign up their child for that? Is it, I know you've sent out emails. Is it, is it simply just, do we just, how do we get involved?
You know, and that has been one of the issues is that the interface set up by the company, and they say like no fault of, well, it's the fault of the company, but the people at the company are very nice and trying to help us. But a lot of parents did, including my wife, struggled to get people to sign up, get their kids signed up because it's not an intuitive, easy go-through thing. And if people got frustrated, they may have put it down and not gone back to it. Or not asked for help. So they've tried to fix some of the bugs in the system. And you had to sign up for two things, because you had to sign up for the screening. It's cool that we talked about a while back, the Abbott, something of it. You know, screening, yeah, for, and then this is another type of test within the same company, but you have to sign up for a different test. You have to sign up for both of them because you're going to screen with one if you have a positive test. And so it got very confusing as you read through the stuff. So I just confused everybody. It just been me explaining, I can explain what's going on. So, you know, I think we're doing another push to get more people sign up. We were talking about that during mid-meets.
Okay.
The community numbers are lower, I think, and I've been staying low. And I think that's because, you know, two things, I think vaccinations are increasing and I think weather's getting better, all those different, there's many different factors that are, and people are still being vigilant and I ask people to continue to be vigilant. And then, where was I going with that? And then, and I think vaccinations overall, I think we, we're starting to hear more and more about teachers getting vaccinated. Now, I as an employer can't ask if you've been vaccinated, you know, there's a, you know, it's a, those medical things. But I think we're, I was talking with the Frontier Union today and asking if they could do an informal poll so we can get an idea of how things are moving along. Because we just hear by word of mouth. Oh, I talked to three people today who, who got their first shot or, you know, that kind of thing. Or I saw three social media postings or that kind of thing. But things are, even before the 11th, the 11th, which is the official opening, there has been some, you know, through CVS and some other means where people have been. So, you know, and I was talking with Trevor, we were at the beginning of the meeting as you folks were logging on about, you know, things might open up incredibly in the next few weeks as, you know, there may be a larger amounts of federal vaccinations coming in. So going off that, go ahead.
Sorry, I just, well, as the, hopefully the next few weeks to get more availability for vaccinations, will we be able to, will the town or county be able to prioritize teachers?
Yes.
Excellent question, nice lead in. You're sure, I'll give you the overview and then you can kind of give what you know, okay? So the overview is that Governor Baker had a press conference today and, and so you can jump on like WWLP or something like that if you want to see the article. But basically they're going to do a new login system, which may or may not help us. Trevor can get some detail there. But they're trying to organize, it's not the fastest, quickest in the West, gets the, gets the vaccination. And they also are creating days that are going to be for teachers only. And they gave four dates of that. However, it gets translated differently when it comes to Western Mass because of how Western Mass is receiving its COVID doses. And then that is how I set up Trevor to take it from there.
Like, so there's still very, very few doses coming to Franklin County. We, we have been able to, I talked with FurCog tonight. We, we are getting about 2,100 doses to Franklin County next week. And we are hoping to set up clinics at Treehouse, which is the Channing Beach Building in Deerfield for Wednesday and Saturday because we could catch, you know, teachers when they're out, you know, half day on, or possibly half day, depending on what they have for professional development on Wednesday, but Saturday. you know, teachers when they're out, you know, half day on, possibly half day or depending on what they have for professional development on Wednesday, but Saturdays, you know, teachers typically off. So so we're, we're got, we got all this information from the state this, today, really this afternoon, that kind of gave us those four dates that we're going to have availability. So I think kind of the rumor has it, still we're about twenty-one hundred doses each week coming in for the next couple of weeks and possibly twenty-eight hundred doses, the final week of that third week. I mean, I think once we get past that, we'll get more J and J in the system. And, and we'll start to see quite a bit more doses coming to the area. And these, and these doses that are coming to Franklin County are really just coming through the Fur Cog for our, for our, for Greenfield, the John Zon, you know, senior center in Greenfield and Treehouse and other different areas that are, that are kind of, we're trying to spoke out and do different communities. So, so we're going to try and do some dedicated ones just for Franklin County. But the state is really critical in saying that we cannot, we can only withhold twenty-five percent for local people. And then you open up to the state. I think when we did ours, you know, a large portion were from Boston and Wellesley and Stowe and just kind of, they drive in two hours out to get a shot. So we're not able to really get that. And so originally, we've been able to say, hey, at three o'clock, we're going to make this public that, and we kind of send out the link to people and they can get ready to kind of get in the queue and sign in. But and we try to open up a little early so we get most of our local people. But I think the state, as Darius said, is changing. And I think when you sign on in the coming days, it will tell you instead of your forty-six minutes in the queue, it'll say, we have an appointment for you at this place at this time, and you have twenty minutes to confirm it. Otherwise it's gone, which is totally different system. So it's really hard to kind of hold those for local. And, and really, so long-winded, we're really trying, we're trying so hard to get more doses. And I think in, in about a month, you'll see quite a bit more like when we, as we get into April, we'll have quite a few more doses available. And, and but please, everybody, go to your doctor, go to CVS, go to Walgreens, go anywhere you can to get. So if you have a spot, if there's other avenues opened up, even if you have to travel and you can travel, please do, you know, try to do that. So I can answer any other questions, but I think the doses will get better. You know, we'll get more, we'll have more opportunities as we go. But it's rough, it's been rough the last, you know, couple of months.
All right. Any questions, Trevor, on that before I move on to the other announcements? So yesterday, in the afternoon, the, we kind of knew this was coming, but not into the exactness of it, but the commissioner released, from Desi, released the regulatory change and basically is having all K to five, which will translate to K to six in our district, to go to school, back to school, where we, to remove the hybrid model to in-person only, starting on April fifth. So basically, we would change where we are in our elementary school from going to four days to five days a week for those students who select the in-person model. Those families who've selected the remote model may continue for the remainder of this year. The document also, I did send it to you and it is a, it's one of those documents you can speed read in the sense that you can kind of get what they're saying about and move kind of really through it quickly. But basically, there is no, and I sent this, emailed the school committee, they're very clear in here that there's no needed vote by the school committee, that this is a, you know, basically a reverting back to the standard in-person practice and therefore doesn't need to be voted on. So they kind of taken the local power away after they, I'll be frank, dumped it on you in the fall. And now they're saying, well, now we'll take this back. We're going, we're going to do it our way this time. So the other kind of highlights of it is that they also talked about that next year will not, there will not be a remote option, given the current trajectory of things. I mean, they can always change if things got bad, but so that is, that's important for us in our planning because if we were doing dual models and that kind of stuff, a percentage of our student body was not going to be here. Those families and they're basically saying those families who still need a be remote for medical reasons will have to choose either a virtual school or homeschool or the other things that were available prior to the COVID year. They also need to go, they had a long discussion and there's a lot more information coming out from Desi about the six foot versus three feet. And that's kind of the area where it's making people nervous. It's kind of the open in the room. We've been at the six-foot model. We're going to try to stay at the six-foot model, but basically Massachusetts is saying you can't change your opening. At Desi rather than Massachusetts, we're the same. Is you can't change your, you can't file for a waiver or anything that if you, if you haven't gone to three feet. So it's three to six feet. And I also want to be careful. When we say three, it doesn't mean we're necessarily, if we have to change things, also in your three feet apart, you're now five and a half feet, five, four and a half feet. I don't think a lot of our classrooms, even in prior to COVID had three-foot spacing other than when you're group, doing group works or those kind of activities. So so anyway, so right now, I think, you know, we have a, we are at six feet and we have kids in four days a week. So shifting to the fifth day, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that difficult in the sense of that spacing. It's going to be difficult, great, you know, you know, I think I have to recognize that the teachers, you know, there is a reset day in the middle. And we also have teachers doing, you know, we're not so much at Deerfield, but we're doing dual roles and trying to kind of catching up and kind of a reset day. So there is the missing of that and we're going to have to figure out when we do our team meetings, a lot of professional development. You know, those kind of things were happening on those, on those Wednesdays as well. So there's some administrative scenes behind the scenes that are going to have to happen. Again, I met with the administrative team this morning, so we just kind of, just started to kind of put it together. Additionally, just as this, this document as well, while it doesn't affect this committee's role, but the middle school also has to go back to five days a week, starting April twenty-fifth and twenty-eighth, so that Wednesday. So after the break, and that was a surprise that caught most superintendents off guard because they were talking about, oh, we'll talk about that in May. Instead, they went to the last week of April following the break. So, you know, Frontier is also having to kind of pull things together for that as well. There will still be six feet distancing during eating times under their recommendation. And Tina, was there anything else in there that we, that we talked about this morning? I'm kind of going through my notes here, which was written all over this thing.
All the high points.
So, but I do, again, I sent that out to all of you. If you're interested about what they're kind of asking or how they're phrasing things, it's really, it's pretty much very, this is the new law, this is the new regulation and you need to comply. So of course, superintendent says, you know, all former students who probably broke rules are recited. They, we said like, what are you going to do if we don't do this? So if we don't do it, they basically don't count the time as time on learning and you have to make up those days at the end of the school year, like a snow day. So that was one thing. And then the second option is that they'll take away one day's worth, one, one hundred, one hundred and eightieth of your chapter seventy funding, which comes out to, you know, I didn't do the math for, I did quickly the math for like Frontier, it comes out to like sixteen thousand dollars a day for Frontier. So we can also get penalized. So they can give us either way, one, it doesn't count and two, they can penalize you financially. So they, they kind of buttoned up all the kind of loose ends, like you will be doing it this way. So since we're at, we're, you know, working out, you know, Tina's already starting to work on the logistics of schedules and working with the different people that those affect. You know, the, the timing, you know, in a perfect world, I think we would have timed it a little bit better with vaccinations. I mean, I think there will be a good, there'll be good, there'll be some sort of percentage of our staff that will be vaccinated at that point, especially if we get the JJ by the end of the month, which is a one-dose thing. And after two weeks, they'll fit that. No, it won't, it still won't be in the timeframe, but this is what they did. So it's not, it's not, it's not our decision, not my decision. But that's kind of that. Any questions? There's, it's a lot to say, but really go read through it and it'll it'll explain what's going on there. I plan on communicating now, I communicated with staff today regarding what's going on, my plan on letting parents know tomorrow, kind of the overall plan, putting that email together, kind of explaining what's going on. We won't have all the details. That will fall at the building level, but just let them know that that's the expectation coming in early, you know.
I would just say, you know, if you need anything as you're trying to, you know, just reach out. I know, Tina, you've been kind of shuffling some furniture around to make room and so whatever the town can do to help as well, just reach out. So whatever we can do to make that for you.
So well, it certainly adds one more wrinkle to this crazy year, but it's a step that the administration wants us to take, I guess. So on up through the, to the national level. So thank you for the update. Fiscal twenty-two budget discussion. Excuse me. We would look to Shelley.
Yep. Darius, do you want to share the narrative?
I do.
Great. One eightieth for Deerfield, also just FYI, calculated quickly is about sixty-five hundred dollars a day. If we did participate in the five-day week and they withhold chapter seventy.
Thank you for that number. I think, I think.
Okay. So this top part, just a reminder here of last year, Darius, you can scroll down a little bit. And then that's the one, two, three, four, five percent increases. So just to summarize where we were at, oh, good. Last time we met, we had a discussion, the draft two of the budget was at seven point one-two percent. Just a reminder of what those pieces are listed here, school lunch wages, early childhood wages. And again, that's because of revolving funds being depleted this year and not knowing what our revenues will be next year. So we added those to the local budget. The twenty-five thousand in the special education wages, that's for an IA who would normally be paid from a revolving fund. As a reminder, we're not going to have that incoming tuition next year that we've had in prior years. And then we have a thirty-five thousand dollar out-of-district tuition increase. So those were the primary causes. Obviously, we still have cost of living adjustments and step in increases and things like that for teachers, IAs, and then non-contract staff. So we had talked last meeting about our options, you know, we had talked about using additional school choice money. We had talked about the possibility of additional revenue in the preschool program and whether or not that would rebuild itself. We had talked about, there was rumor about state, additional state or federal funding coming out for COVID relief. And I had sort of presented you with some possible scenarios if we did utilize primarily school choice because that was really the only known thing at the time. And since then, we have learned that there is an additional grant available. So I am, Darius and I looked through budgets. We're going to make a couple of recommendations on how to move forward, even though we're not at a point of voting budget and setting budget. We do think that these are reasonable steps for us to take. The first piece is with the Essar two grants. So Deerfield received a grant already under elementary and secondary education, which was funded federally. And there is a second grant that is coming out. Deerfield, I believe, is eligible for about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with this grant, and it is to be used up until September of twenty-twenty-three. So if we don't use all of it in twenty-one or twenty-two, it can roll for two more years because September of twenty-three will put us into fiscal year twenty-four. So the funds can be used for similar sources related to COVID-19, PPE, school distance learning, extra cleaning products, HVAC. But there's also this caveat in there that the funds can be used to maintain existing operations of the school. And the interpretation of that is that if we would be in a position of having to reduce staffing, and it's easy to talk about the early childhood or the school lunch program because those are the ones creating the hardship for us this year. So if we were in a position where we couldn't fund those without a significant budget increase, we can use these funds to help offset that budget increase. So the recommendation is that we use almost all of this funding source in fiscal year twenty-two. It would be about thirty-four thousand dollars in school lunch wages and almost eighty thousand in early childhood wages. Those, again, just as a reminder, would normally be paid from the revolving fund. Now, we've talked in the past, and I know school committee members know this, but just for any public watching, it's usually not a good idea to pay wages from a one-time funding source influx of cash. However, with these revolving funds, it really makes a lot of sense because like we talked about with the early childhood program last month, the program is going to rebuild. Students are going to come back. We are going to start to see more tuition. It's going to take us a couple of years to get back to where we were previously. But having this influx of cash to support us next year buys us some time to build up reserves in these two programs so that hopefully by fiscal year twenty-three, we're ready for those revolving funds to take on those wages again. And there doesn't have to be any further impact on the general fund. So that is the first recommendation that we're making. I think it's fiscally responsible. I think it's a good use of this money. You know, unless something comes out of the blue, I don't think that there's anything that Tina or the school is waiting for, for, you know, like physical equipment or HVAC things, you know, we spent, made good use of the state's money and the town's generosity with their municipal money this year. So I think this makes the most sense, most sense to support us with the general fund budget for, to pay these wages. So the next recommendation, Darius, if you don't mind scrolling down to next piece, is to take this year's savings, which I did talk a little bit about at the beginning of this meeting. So right now I'm projecting that we have at least ninety thousand of savings from this year's general fund budget. If you remember, we did this last year, we had a budget freeze and we reallocated money around and we're able to free up additional school choice funds to help support the FY twenty-one budget. Well, I'm essentially proposing the same thing, although we're not doing a budget freeze. We just have existing savings from some major staffing positions that were not filled. And then the transportation is a pretty significant amount as well because of the contract negotiation and then credits for remote days. So if we take that ninety thousand and are able to put that into school choice to increase our school choice number and then essentially use that money right away, my recommendation would be to pay the out-of-district placement costs, spend down that full ninety thousand on that for next year. And I do think we have to take caution in doing that because if we don't have a significant increase in school choice revenue next year, and we still have the same out-of-district costs, we would have to put those back on local fund or our general fund budget. But we're buying some time, you know, and if, and the money is there and it's available. So those are my two recommendations. So after taking those steps there, we are looking at going from a seven point one-two percent increase to a three point five-four, which is certainly much more palatable. And there may be further opportunity to decrease that, you know, again, we're not looking to, as far as I know, vote a budget or approve a budget this, at this meeting. So we still have time to work on it. But right now, that's the number that we're looking at. Trevor, if you have your hand up.
You're muted, Trevor.
Thank you. Just a question on the Essar two CARES Act. That's existing money. That's not the bill that's in, you know, hopefully before the President, that's existing funding that came through the CARES Act through the last, last thing, correct?
Yeah. So this is new. Since we met in January, we did not have this information. So this just came out mid-January, what the amounts were going to be. But you're absolutely right. There's a new portion of funding that is going before the president. And Darius heard some information about it today, I think on the call with the commissioner. I haven't heard anything from Desi, from, you know, the business side of things, but our understanding is that there will be more money coming. We don't necessarily know how much yet. So this is the second round of federal, and it does seem that there's going to be a third round of additional support for schools.
That's great. Thank you.
So if we get, you know, if we get that money and it is another significant amount, I mean, a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a decent amount of money. So you know, if we're looking at, it'd be great if it was even a match of what Essar two was, you know, that would help bring down that three point five-four percent. Again, I just caution us to make sure that whatever we're paying for, we understand that it's a one-time use of funds. You know, and we're looking at adding that stuff back in unless we can continue to do what we're doing with the revolving and give that time to build back up. So does that answer your question, Trevor?
Yes, thank you. That's perfect.
So I have a little bit more here that I want to talk about. I want to shift gears a little bit since we are talking about the revolving funds and those being a primary source of our challenge this year. I want to just add in some information for you all to consider. So this is what I'm looking at for a projection going into next year FY twenty-two. So the one point, almost one point one million here that we're looking at, at the rollover, that includes the ninety thousand in the savings. The revenue that we're currently projected for next year is just shy of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then the expenses of the four hundred and And then the expenses of the 454,000, that includes the additional 90,000 that I'm saying we should pay the out-of-district placement. So all of those things that I recommended above have been accounted for in here. So we would be looking at the end of next year at a school choice balance of 872,000 roughly. You know, we talked about this last month, that revenue has gone down over the last few years and our expenses are not necessarily decreasing at the same rate. And I know we're going to talk about school choice and students and you all are going to vote on accepting students tonight. So I just wanted you to have some historical information here to look at the budget. We can scroll down a little bit further, please, Darius. So here's the history from '18 to '22. You know, you can really clearly see that revenue has significantly decreased. And I know that you all had conversations and made cognitive decisions about how many school choice students you were accepting. But we're really sort of at a point in Deerfield where if the classroom sizes can handle it from a financial perspective, we really should think about bringing in additional school choice students if we can. And then you can see the revenues, with the exception of last year, which is really just because of reallocation of funds, revenues haven't decreased at all, even, I'm sorry, expenses haven't decreased at all, even though revenues are dropping. So, you know, not something that we're going to solve tonight. I just want to continue to talk about this as we go through budget because we should start thinking about how we move some of these recurring salary expenditures off. And, you know, that's going to be a long process, but I just wanted to put it out there on the forefront in case anyone was wondering historically what we're looking at or the numbers look like going into '22. I did sort of the same synopsis here with early childhood and the school lunch program. So, oops, I'm sorry, that should, oh no, that's '21. I don't have '22 numbers on here. So start of the year, we had about 18,000 rollover. Our revenue is just shy of 5,000 of what we're projecting for now. Expenditures, because we did move all salaries off, so the 3250 in expenditures is just supplies, snacks, you know, some materials for the program that aren't paid from the general fund. So we're looking at ending the year just over 20,000. Typically, the revolving funds, we would want to have, you know, 25,000, 35,000 as a rollover just in case there's some crazy unforeseen expenditure. So with moving wages off this year, we're going to be able to be in a comfortable spot, I think. You know, and the reason that we moved those wages off of '22 is because there's so many unknowns. But we do know that with school coming back this April, you know, I think it's safe for us to make an assumption that school's going to look the same or somewhat normal next year, meaning that our classroom sizes, the capacity can hopefully increase. And if we are able to increase class sizes or if more community members are ready to bring their children back into preschool programs, it gives us an opportunity to increase our revenue. Darius, if you can scroll down a little bit more, I have a history here and then I have a projection for you. So just to look historically, Deerfield's preschool program did bring in quite a bit of revenue, you know, 200,000 plus over the last three years. We had that drop last year because of COVID where we stopped charging. But we were covering a significant amount of expenditures year to year from revenue coming in from tuition. Right now, we're looking at next year, based on the current applications that we have and the returning students. The preschool director is projecting about 85,000 in revenue. That could change at the drop of a hat because while we have applications in hand, a family may change their mind and decide not to enroll. So this is just based on existing materials that we have right now. And because we're not paying any salaries or wages right now out of this revolving fund, our expenses would be 5,000 or less just for those supplies and materials again. So if that number is actually attainable, which I don't think we'll know for at least another month. I know Amy is talking about getting acceptance letters out to families and things, but there might still be some that change their mind or decide to go with another school or another private daycare. But say our revenue is able to come in at 85,000, you know, I think it would be wise for us to try to put at least an IA or two back on the revolving fund and free up money somewhere else. I just don't think we're in a position right now to make that decision because I want to make sure that we're set up for success and not failure with this revolving fund. So we have a similar situation with school lunch. You can see the numbers there, start of the year, end of the year. The school lunch account went into the year with 25,000. Again, that's a really healthy balance for us to go into. We wouldn't want to go less than that. You know, you have a freezer or a walk-in break or a stove, you know, you're looking at $10,000, $15,000 to replace equipment really quickly. So I think that that's a good amount for us to stick with in the revolving fund. Our revenue, it's just projections through the end of the year, but based on what I'm seeing from federal and state reimbursements, my thought is we're going to bring in around 46,000 in revenue. We have the Deerfield Academy donation that we're accounting for. And then our expenditures right now, I'm projecting out to be about 30,000. Again, doesn't include those wages because we did move those over earlier in this year. So expenses normally would be significantly higher. So ending the year at 55,000, right now, we're looking at having the 33,000 that I talked about paid from the Esser grant and 25,000 I do have budgeted to come out of the school lunch revolving fund that's paying some of our cafeteria staff wages. With a higher end of year balance, I think we can safely make that decision. You know, and again, that theme of if we can return to some normalcy, there could be an increase in revenue and we could have additional conversations about moving money back around. And then I give you a little bit of a history here as well, just to wrap this up. You can see 130 to 125,000 last year, a little bit less again because of COVID when we stopped serving lunches in school. But the program had been making enough of a surplus every year so that there was some cushion. I have no idea what USDA is going to do for the fall. I don't know if they're going to continue the free lunches and free breakfasts for another year, which is why there's question marks there under that revenue for next year. I can't even make a prediction without knowing at this point what they're going to do federally. And then the expenses, the only expense we know right now is the salaries and wages, but we would still have food costs and materials and supplies. So, you know, this is certainly a revolving fund that we need to continue to pay attention to. And if we could get additional federal relief, that it would help support this program. But again, there's that idea of we need to build this up in school lunch and early childhood so that in fiscal year '23 and if not '23, '24, these programs are more self-efficient and able to fund themselves as they were in the past. So I know it's a lot of information. I'm happy to take questions if you have them. And recommendations, if you have other recommendations or want to see, you know, the budget in different ways, I'm happy to continue to work with that so that we can get the products that you all are looking for before we vote.
I just, if we could look at this last school lunch history again briefly, Darius, sorry. I see you have expenses in FY22 per your initial projection with three plus marks after it, which I assume means, who knows? But that's considerably less than the expenses for this year. And this year has been a very limited, I mean, has been a somewhat limited program. Is that, I mean, do you feel that's a realistic number that you're carrying right now? Or how did you arrive at that number?
Yeah, so the only, the 24,575, the only thing that that represents right now is the salaries and wages that I know we're going to pay out of that revolving.
Okay.
So it doesn't count for food costs. It doesn't account for packaging, you know, plastic wrap, forks, like all those supplies and materials that are needed. So you're absolutely right, Ken. That number will be significantly higher. And the goal is that, you know, at least we will be able to bring in enough revenue to cover those extra things. And then with our 50,000 that we're rolling over, we'll pay 25,000 of wages out of it. So we'll still have some surplus and, you know, it's just hard to predict right now, even based on this year's numbers for food and supply costs. We don't have 100% of our students in the building and we're not serving the kids that are in the building every single day because up until a few weeks ago, we were on this rotating, you know, two-day-a-week schedule. So it's a little bit harder for me to do the projections right now. I could look historically and say, sure, we're going to, we need 100 grand. You know, which if you look at the last three years, that's basically what we've needed. But my hope is that we can at least bring in enough revenue to cover those pieces and then we can work on the salary pieces the following year.
Okay, thank you. I just, I was wondering where the number came from and you answered it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I was just going to say, I think, oh, go ahead, David.
Oh, thanks, Trevor. Shelley, thanks for letting all this out in a very nice, organized visual fashion for all of us. I'm just curious about this CARES, the new CARES grant that you indicated. We have sort of since January and you said that had about 125,000 in it? And so I'm just curious about how these numbers sort of, it shows like 33,952 and 79,846, these very specific numbers. And then what are we doing with this? Is there another 12, $13,000 to get up to that 125?
Yes. So those, yep, those specific numbers equate to specifics people. So I have fully laid out in the budget each individual person in each program. So school lunch, so, you know, I took two of those staff and their wages totaled the 33,000. And then in early childhood, I believe it is three IAs that their wages come up to the 79,846. So that's why those numbers are a little bit, you know, they're not a straight number. The remainder of the money, the state is saying that 10,000 of it has to be spent on supporting mental health services in schools. So we're going to be required to spend 10,000 on that. And then if there is anything else left after, you know, that would be at the discretion of the principal or any other needs that come up, whether it's more HVAC repairs or we need another tent or things like that. So the money's not fully planned out at this point, other than the salaries.
And does it have to be spent in a particular fiscal year or is it?
No, so we could actually apply for it now and use it this year, but we're going to wait and apply for it to start in FY22. And we have to use it by September of '23, which is the '24 fiscal year. So we have several years. And if you don't spend it all, so if we apply for it for next year, it's automatically going to roll until we spend it. So, you know, say we can pay the early childhood wages with tuition that comes in, we could save the Esser money for the following school year. It's automatically going to carry over for us.
Good. Okay. So my, my question was kind of going, or really more of a statement going back to in school, school lunch and the early childhood is that, you know, a year is a long time and people's habits change. So coming back to buy school lunch, it's not going to be in those same numbers for a while. I mean, I'm sure some people are just like, oh, school lunch is ready, I'm going to come back. But others have found what they do and, you know, it just takes a while to kind of build up that, that clientele. Same with, you know, the early childhood is there, they've picked their school. You know, they've, they've made a change and those kids probably aren't coming back for a little bit. And so it will take a little bit of time for those, those accounts to kind of get back to their historic norms, I think. So it's good to be conservative on those for sure.
So the, the one last thing that Shelley alluded to or talked about very briefly that I heard today, the Commissioner had Bill Bell, I don't know what his essential role is, but he's the Shelley of Desi. And basically said, so what is the projection? So there's a bill right now, so we have this Esser 2 money that's in front of the Ways and Means Committee right now. So it's part of the governor's proposed budget. So it's not 100% voted on, but they, they pretty much are saying, sorry, correct me if I'm mistaken. It's not 100% stamped and approved, but they, they're assuming that it's going to go through. It is the strong, they're allowing us to basically start projecting budgets with it. At the same time, at the federal government right now, it's going to the President's desk either today or tomorrow, or maybe it already has as we've been sitting here, another federal relief package. And the bill said today that one could expect two to two and a half times the amount of Esser 2. So you're talking about a couple hundred thousand for Deerfield. So this might change, again, how we look at everything, where we roll here. And again, the smart move by all of you to wait through, extend this process because we didn't know about Esser 2 to begin with. If we tried to throw a budget together, we would have been reducing, reducing, reducing. So now we have Esser 2, and now we might get another influx of money. And the question we're going to have to look at is like, how do you play the game, especially if they do it over multiple years? You know what I mean? If, if, and that's one of those things I'm, you know, we actually had a side conversation about, like how many COVID, how much COVID expenses are going to happen next year? You know what I mean? And are they going to allow you to spend it on other stuff? Are they going to take the money back? And we're going to have to be very careful about how much we reserve versus how much we use. And anytime we can use that money and not use school choice, being, because then the school choice, we could always use later for certain things. So we're going to have to have, those will be discussions kind of moving forward. And that's another reason why we don't have a budget yet. So I know, Trevor, you're the select board here, but I know some other people were watching tonight because they asked me for the address. You know, that's the, those, that's the, that's why we're dragging our feet because we might have better news or you may change things up before it goes to the town.
Yep.
Well, certainly this, this budget is, is much better news than we've been looking at. Thank you for, for the, you know, for this work and presenting it so clearly, Shelley and Darius. You know, it puts us at three and a half percent instead of almost 7.2%. And it gets us into a range that we can have a conversation with the town fathers and the finance committee and, and see, see what the thoughts are. Because we are, it, as you've noted, is a level funded or a level budget in terms of services. Obviously, it's never going to say the same dollar amount simply because of the obligations we have on, on salaries and increased costs for various benefit expenses and things like that. But this is a, this is a much, much better one. I'd like to see if we could at least forward this number to the Select Board and Finance Committee as where we stand now, with that word of caution that you just, you know, that you just stated, Darius, and both you and Shelley have said tonight, that this is where we're at. We still have more information coming in so the picture can hopefully change to the, to the better. But what, let's find out what the town fathers and finance committee think of the three and a half percent.
Could I ask about the, you know, as, I don't know if we're going to get into the budget or this was just, you know, kind of review. But, you know, under, under the paraprofessionals, the salaries for kindergarten IAs, were you thinking, Tina, do you see a need, or Darius, you're seeing a need for kind of adding some of that support? Or is that moving from something else? Or, you know, I noticed there was about a, you know, 50,000 or so, or $61,000 change in the IAs total. I mean, some were reducing, some were increasing, but just wondered, how, how does kindergarten feel like for the coming year? Tina.
How do you feel about that kindergarten for the coming year?
How to run all that information? I do believe, and Shelley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that kindergarten, there's, you're going to need some extra support this year, given the needs.
Yeah. And, and that's kind of what I thought all around is that, you know, this, just catching everybody back up. I mean, once we can all get together, I mean, we really need to assess what happened last year. Where are the kids at? What are those extra reading needs and, you know, math needs or, or, you know, any kind of need?
Trevor, that's not actually even related to that. It's special education.
Right. Okay. Yep, tho- those, those areas are, okay, gotcha. But I still feel like I'm concerned about where our kids are at, for sure.
Go ahead, Shelley.
So I just want to point out that while the numbers look like there is additional IAs, because there is a $50,000 increase compared to the prior year, we haven't actually added any staff.
Right.
So, you know, last year or this year, when we saved money and had extra school choice expenditures, some of those naturally got put back on this year's budget because that was a one-time decision to move things around. So it looks a little bit deceiving and I can see why one would think that, okay, there's this $50,000 increase. We must have added staff. We must have added staff. But if you look at, you know, a couple lines above that, we have, you know, a thirty-three thousand dollar decrease. So it's really sort of just, I cleaned up a lot of the numbers, but we have not added any IAs. In fact, we did decrease one IA because of the for me?
I can hear you. Yep.
Okay, everyone was frozen on my screen.
It briefly froze.
I thought maybe I was talking to myself for a second. I don't know what you heard or didn't hear, but if we hadn't added any staff in, was the point that I wanted to make.
No, that's helpful to clarify as people look at that. As I was looking at, it was like, huh, are we, do we see any need? But it's just kind of adding back from what we had taken off the, the year before.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean that a need, a need might exist, you know, we certainly might have to look at that. But we did actually reduce one IA. I believe there was a vacant position. So it didn't mean that anyone had to be let go, but we had that reduction in the special education program. So there was a one-to-one there for that student who won't be there next year. So we're actually down one position. I believe for next year, I think, Tina, is that correct? Yeah, she's nodding her head, yes.
Yeah, but we're, we're still finding out who's coming back and what those need, and any additional needs that might be coming in.
Yeah.
And as we, as we move on a little bit later in the meeting here to school choice, we never know what school choice will bring to us either. So. So, any other questions for Shelley at this point in time? It's, you, you have my sympathy trying to craft a budget in this year.
Very grateful.
It's no easy task and yet you, you, you show up with a smile every meeting. And I imagine you do that in all, all of the school committee meetings for the towns and the region.
I feel like this is a recurring theme here. You guys said the same thing last year. You don't envy me having to create budget in the circumstances. So maybe next year will be easier.
Yeah.
Well, you're doing a great job. I hope so, for your sake, for all our, our sakes. So. So, any other questions out there? If not, we will move on to, to school. I, I hope the committee doesn't mind that I ask the administration to at least forward this draft budget onto the Select Board and Finance Committee. Are we all in agreement? That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Not to get their feedback? Okay, thank you. We have a school choice vote, which means we have school choice information to consider. And I don't know who's presenting it.
Yeah, I hadn't seen any in the.
So my mistake, Darius, was I supposed to send over a draft? I have it.
Why don't you just present your screen?
Yeah, you could share.
I assumed you.
Oh.
So it's on my hard copy. I thought we were talking about just if we're voting or not and I might have miscommunicated about the numbers, but I can go through them.
We, we can get that chart, you know, the classroom chart, you know, yours.
Yep, I can, I can get that to you shortly after the meeting. I think I miscommunicated or misunderstood a conversation that I, that I had earlier. I thought we were just voting. No, I'm owning it. I'll get you to start.
Appreciate you falling on the sword that I did not communicate with you effectively. That's a good administrator. You're gonna make it someday.
I didn't reach out and ask either, so I can accept part of the blame here as well.
But I'm gonna keep trying.
Yeah, we'll tell you your thoughts anyways.
Yeah, so, um, without having a whole lot of information on what class spacing is gonna look like next year. My recommendation would be to vote yes to school choice, that we can accept school choice. But to have some leeway around how many students in each classroom that would be. Right now, we have thirty-two kindergarten registrations and eight school choice. Depending upon our, our social distancing, we may need to open up a third classroom with those numbers. And so I would anticipate taking school choice along in kindergarten. Right now, it's really hard to decide how many we could fit in if we wanted to look at different classrooms and class sizes because of the social distancing. And where to, I'm, our, you know, we're using every ounce of space. So, and, and Darius, I know there was alluded to, we might go back to somewhat normalcy in September. And I don't know if that's, if that is on the, on the table.
Yeah, so basically what I've done so far at the other frontier and weightly, I've already gotten ahead of you guys this month. Basically asking for the discretion of the principal, you know, not to create new sections using school choice, but to fill out the current sections we have. In the discretion, you know, basically opening it up in all classes greater to equal than one, you know, per class at least. And then, because the idea is also, you know, the principal also can look at the needs of the classroom. It's not always just a numbers game. Sometimes that there's high needs in a classroom where you can't just add additional students.
Right.
Based on the, you know, the demands of those, the needs of those students. So that's basically, you know, basically school choices, an up or down vote. If you wanna be a school choice school or not, you'd be crazy not to be. But, and then, you know, we, we kind of talk, you know, you know, how much per classroom, just so you have an idea of what's going on. So this year, we don't, you know, we, we're still counting the numbers for each grade level. We, you know, we're gonna see who's gonna be coming back. And so we may have to do school choice acceptance in stages. There might be a stage one and then a waitlist. Depending on how many applicants we get and that kind of.
Okay. Okay, so.
Ask a quick question. Sorry, I was confused by Tina, something you just said. You started off just talking about kindergarten and you said there's thirty-two registered and then eight school choice. Do you mean already school choice applicants or of that thirty-two, there are eight who are school choice?
Great question. Thanks for that. There's thirty-two registered and we have eight school choice that we could consider.
And then, and then we.
Go ahead, sorry. Of the eight school choice, two are staff children. So those are gonna be swept in.
So there are six school choice.
There you go.
So, okay, and then, but then you said something about we, with those numbers, we may have to add a third kindergarten section?
Yes, if we have the same social distancing that we have now because we're kind of running out of room. And right now, we have, I have the numbers in front of me, we have about fifteen in each room.
So, but, okay, so you're talking about possibly seventeen? It's okay.
I know it sounds like, it sounds like a little bit of, of little bodies in a room. But we also don't forget a lot of kindergarten is kind of those that play and those stations that they need to go to. And we've really kind of cut down on that in the classroom and I'm not sure how much more room we have. Plus, they have tables and not desks. So each kid has a table and not a desk. So depending upon where our social distancing lands, three feet or six feet is gonna be huge for us.
But isn't, doesn't that raise a, a bigger budgetary issue if you're talking about adding a teacher that we're, I haven't considered here? Or are you taking a teacher who's gonna lose out in a different grade because of the numbers moving through?
Yeah, so I have other conver, I have other conversations to have, to have with Shelley. I just got these numbers today. And, and looking at those, I have a, and I don't think that we're gonna need to add money to that. We have a different proposal that I probably don't wanna go public with until I tap to Shelley and Darius.
Still working some things out. That's fine. Yeah. Okay, so right now, do we have two classes or do we have, we have two this year, right? But possibly three if we get more influx of kids and, and, and we're still dealing with, you know, space. Okay.
I mean, prior, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but prior to COVID considerations and physical distancing and everything that's involved with it. We had talked at some point in time about kindergarten classes really approaching what I would call almost inefficiency at around sixteen students per classroom.
Yes.
And here you're talking about potentially two classes of twenty.
Yeah.
If we, if we open up the six additional spaces, we have two staff, if we, if we participate in school choice, we have two staff that would school choice in. That would put us at thirty-four kids. So that's right at seventeen. So I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand how we could add six additional students to get to forty without considering another classroom move.
I, yeah, I wouldn't add school choice if our social distancing number stays where they, or reduces. If our social distancing number stays where they are at six feet, we may have to open up another classroom to fit the students in, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
And Kenny, you're right. Going back to those school choice numbers, we did talk about keeping class sizes small, particularly in kindergarten and the lower grades. To help us with those intense targeted instructions along the way. And that's what you're seeing as far as the history of school choice too. And there was conversation that when they got up into the older, older grades or the upper grades, that we would then continue to plug school choice back into there. And we just haven't gotten into that wave yet.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right, that's helpful.
So.
Can I just say, in case I didn't say it, it, I just wanna be, I think it's a slippery slope if we're adding teachers to teach school choice kids. If that's the reason we're having to add teachers. I mean, I'm all for our, I mean, our school obviously is very attractive. And it's maybe helpful budgetary or not. I also am not keen on, you know, poaching kids from other districts and creating the, you know, flow of the deterioration in other districts that are losing, losing kids to ours and losing money. So I just, it just seems like it's a, it's a, it's a, it would be somewhat controversial, I think, to add a kindergarten teacher to, to add six school choice kids.
Could I speak to that a sec?
Or at least something we would need to discuss.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that, I think our, our intention as a board has been for a while is that we would not be interested in adding just another classroom teacher, you know, just so that we could accept school choice. That was the whole reason we went to, to, to begin with. And I think what Tina's saying is that we would only add them if, if our own native kids, because of spacing and just trying to keep those small. If, if we were gonna end up just for our native, we were gonna have to add one more classroom. Then we have the space and that's when we agree it makes sense to allow some other kids into there. But, but our intention, I hope, I think Tina agrees that we would not be looking to do three just, just so that we could get in school choice kids.
Thank you for clarifying, Trevor. That's exactly what I'm saying is right now, we're on the cusp. Right now, we're on the cusp. We're gonna hold it at two classrooms. Put it on your radar if we do get more kindergartens enrolling and space stays the way it is, we may need to look at adding another teacher. If we do add another teacher, we would have room to add school choice. We're not looking at adding another teacher because we have eight school choice. And wouldn't, at this point, wouldn't we expect a couple more students anyway between March and September?
Yeah.
I believe, I feel like this is a reoccurring theme that I've talked about every time this year of put it on your radar. Because typically what does happen, Carrie, is you're absolutely correct. We get an influx typically over the summer and towards the end of this year. And with the numbers at thirty-two, this is about where we are every time this year. Last year, we, the school closed and enrollment dropped and we didn't have, we didn't need to have a third teacher. This year, I anticipate, just given the numbers where we are in history and looking at patterns, that we may need to look at adding a third teacher. Just want you to keep your eyes on the, the number of enrollments and just kind of be aware if we come back down the line. With that said, I don't think it's gonna impact the budget with some of the other resources that I've been looking at.
Okay.
Okay.
How about, Ken, how about for just, I think, process-wise, what I'm hearing is that, let's do a, let's vote that we become a school choice school. And then that we will do an enrollment report on, you know, you will have an idea of preschool enrollment and kindergarten enrollment at, well, we have a joint meeting in next month. So maybe the next time we have a meeting, Tina can put that together. It's something I can share with you guys ahead of time. So you can look at the actual numbers and we can see how they're changing as the spring moves forward. But meanwhile, we can accept, we can accept school choice applications, but we're uncertain the number of slots that are gonna be open. You're voting to be a school choice school allows us to collect school choice applications. And then also in the grades, we're only adding one or two people. We can go ahead and get those families secured for their plans for next year. And then kindergarten, we may have to say, you know what, we're not gonna be able to make that decision until May due to the uncertainty of our class sizes.
That's, that's essentially what I was going to suggest is, as a motion would be the emotion to agree to participate or to participate in the school choice program for the fiscal twenty-two year with the, with the added instruction that we'd be provided with enrollment numbers at future meetings before slots are filled.
I would second that motion, Trevor McDaniel.
That was just a suggested.
Oh, well, you made it up.
Make the motion.
I'll make the motion then, just as that. I think our intention. So, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Carrie.
One good question. Maybe I won't, but one good question the legal authority of the school committee has to make that decision. I think you only have the authority to be a school choice school or not. And then you could also have the, the choice of whether or not you'd expend to extend grade levels. But I'm not sure you can choose whether to have two people add to fifth grade, one add to sixth grade. I, I wonder.
I'm more concerned with whether there would be impacts on our staffing needs.
Yeah, that, that certainly would involve users. I'm just saying, because the general law doesn't say that the school committee can choose how many per grade level.
Correct.
Says whether or not you'll be a school choice school. But if we're trying to expand the grade level, that certainly falls in your authority. I'm just trying to be.
Yep.
I wanna battle with you guys. That's what I really want.
We trust you.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions from people or concerns? We, we've been tied to school choice for so many years now that I, I, to not participate in school choice and continue down the path that we've been on would be pretty devastating to our budgetary considerations. That much I can, we can all see. We can all see the handwriting on the wall. So.
I agree, it helps.
I just, again, just to make it as a general observation, I mean, I'm all for maximizing as many tax dollars as we can and put them into our elementary school. But it seems like we should keep an eye on the number of students that we had, for instance, in the last school year compared with this school year. And, and the fact that the budget is similar would indicate that our cost per student that we are paying for, for our school has gone up, which is a wonderful thing, I think. But it should, it also, that we are, should be a very well-resourced school per student. And yet, you know, we're not, as Kenny was talking about, some programmatic things. We're not necessarily adding things here for the kids, or for the teachers, or for whatever. So, so I'm just curious, at some point, it would be interesting to see that number. Because I, if my memory is correct, we may have dropped fifty kids.
Yeah, you dropped seventy-five.
Seventy-five, which is, to me, is an enormous percentage.
Yep, but let me clarify that fifty-eight of those students are in pre-K and K. Where, where families have the ability to say, screen learning is not gonna work for my child. And we're gonna try, you know, I need childcare with the pre-K option where we could not provide in-service out of this, out of the gate for school. So, you know, you're really just talking about a seventeen number difference for the rest of that, doing the math for you. So we're down really just seventeen if you don't remove those two, those two early childhood years.
So we're down fifty-eight kids in the early childhood years, you're saying?
Pre-K and K, yep.
Pre-K, okay. Well, that, that's a different analysis then. Okay.
No, I mean, I have, I mean, I have, we're, we're charting that as well and looking at those school trade numbers. And I can, I'll get you guys this, this document as well. So you can kind of see through the years. You know, our actual school choice in went from sixty-seven to forty-seven in that as well. You know, our actual school choice in went from sixty seven to forty seven in that as well, in those numbers as well. From, from nineteen to twenty, so. So.
Right. Okay, now, I, it's a different analysis then, yeah, it's not, it's not evenly across the board, then it's something that could change. Quickly back up.
Mm hmm. And this is something we've juggled for our entire. Time with school choice is that when we started, we were able to use it. David, to do exactly what you're talking about, to expand programs and offer services that we hadn't previously offered. But over the years, it became increasingly a supplement to the general, to the general fund budget. Or supplement or aid to the general fund. Efforts, so. And now we're faced with the need to wean ourselves off of that dependence and get back to everything being supported through the general fund. So, Shelly has that enviable task. What's that?
And you have to understand that you're part of a larger organism of the. You know, K to twelve, and so you're the biggest feeder of school choice into Frontier. Frontier relies on school choice, not just budget wise, but in order to have the programming. That it does offer, if we reduced by the number of school choice, we would have to reduce the number of elective offerings and. Science offerings and, you know, we'd have to be a very basic school, but those extra, basically a hundred and sixty students overall. Allow us to have fuller programming, so it's kind of like this thing like. You guys are the, you guys are the biggest fish that's feeding the other fish. If, if you, you mess up the eco chain, it does have a ripple effect through, and so. I'm just saying that out loud. I'm not worried, am I worried about the changes that we're having right now, but it is something that I keep an eye on too, like what are we feeding in? And if there's a, if you suddenly stopped. It would have a ripple effect all the way through several years later. You know, that kind of stuff, but it's just interesting how we are intertwined that way.
Right. It's a great point. I think Frontier should fund our third kindergarten teacher. It's about sixteen thousand four twenty eight per year in two thousand nineteen is kind of what we spent educating a child. Round numbers.
Okay, so. So we do have a motion with Trevor making the motion and Carrie seconding. Any further discussion on school choice, participation in school choice? Seeing none. We'll go to a rule call vote. All those in favor, Ken Cutterback, yes? David Sharp?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
Gary Echols?
Yes.
And it carries to five, no, five zero unanimously. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Tina, for providing us the update. And we look forward to seeing a few more numbers involved with it. And we can move on to reports. The committee slash chair, the only thing I would say. As part of my, as my report would be that I have been participating in the capital planning committee meetings. Trevor sat in on a meeting last week to. Update on some select board initiatives, but also provided some insight into what's going on in the school. And the committee has voted to approve the, or to recommend. The carpeting and. Restroom. Renovations projects that were submitted. And Trevor's got a hand up.
Well, Ken, I was going to ask you about that. I know you had, you had kind of talked that this would be the last bathroom. I think this is the last. Public, right, shared bathroom, maybe we would do at the school. I just wanted some clarification because I think. I was under the impression we were going to kind of go and start doing like kindergarten bathrooms and like. Keep going a little bit on that, but I, maybe I'm wrong. I just. Didn't know if there was still some need there.
The, the initial plan, what I had referred to were the initial plans we were given were the. Primary public bathrooms at the entrance to cafeteria and then each of the classroom wing bathrooms. We had never had the. Recommendation or proposal submitted for the kindergarten or faculty class, you know, upgrading those facilities that I'm aware of. I may be wrong.
I, I had thought originally when I kind of did a walkthrough, this was several years ago, just looking at the needs that there were some like in. Like the preschool bathrooms and stuff were in pretty bad shape and just the thought to maybe we should look at. You know, since we've been doing that, maybe they don't need as much of a huge, you know, they don't have partitions or anything, but maybe there's some things that we could. You know, just make sure those are still good shape. I don't know, Tina.
I was going to say, are you sure that's not on there, Ken? Because I think it's just included in the number of bathrooms. I don't think it just says which ones, but Trevor, you're. Absolutely correct. We did talk about preschool.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. I don't recall all of them, but I, I remember the sequence being the three classroom wings and.
For sure.
The classroom wings. And, you know, we were reaching the end of that. If we have more to come, that's, that's fine. We'll. We can, we can continue it or certainly put it back in. It's.
Okay.
These are not major, from my perspective, major capital expenses and the school has been very diligent. And the administration has been very diligent in taking these major expenses that if you did them all at once. Would be a significant hit on a, on a tax year and spreading them out over two, three and four years, which makes the most sense. So certainly I would, I'd be supportive of bringing them. I, I, I would point out that March twenty eighth. Of two thousand twenty one is the thirtieth anniversary of the groundbreaking.
Oh.
Ceremony for the Deerfield Elementary School Project.
Well, that's kind of neat.
Well, I, I, I knew it was something like, I knew we were closing in on thirty years, but I, I. In my shed out back, I have a shovel hanging there that has, was used in the groundbreaking and I. Had to pull it out for something recently to use it and I noticed the dates on it were March twenty eighth. So thirty years ago on March twenty eighth. If you, if you want to have a celebration with whoever's in the school at that point in time, Tina, feel free.
That's pretty exciting.
And then we would have eighteen months later. The thirtieth anniversary of the move in into the building in January. So.
The school wants that solid gold shovel back.
Yeah. Yeah, I was looking at it thinking, I've seen them plated and with really neat stuff. This had sort of the, the old. Embossed tape that you could make and they, they. Taped them onto these. I think they had about twelve of the shovels. I wasn't here for the ceremony. I had to be out of town unfortunately, but. They tape these, the notation and the date and everything on them and it's hung on this long, thirty years later, it's still. Well, what's left of it is, the, the numbers are still there, so anyways. But yes, and so the. The capital planning committee has approved what we had submitted to them for, to recommend. What we had submitted to them, so those projects will hopefully continue to go forward after town meeting. So. The collaborative, anything from Carrie?
Nothing. Off month.
Okay. Good. All right, thank you. And principals report, we all received a copy. Thank you, team.
You're welcome. I'll just go over really quickly because I know we've all been here for quite a while. With the five days a week, I thought you would like to hear where we are as far as numbers. We have eighty percent of our students are back in person. That's about two hundred and fifty five students and twenty percent remain remote. That's about sixty students or sixty two students. We are starting to see a slow and steady. Team of students coming back to in-person, we had five come back in March and we already have two on the list for April. And our numbers that, if, if, in case you were curious, our numbers went from seventy percent in October to seventy seven when we switched to phase three, which was four days a week. Now we're at eighty percent. Data for you. I just wanted to give a shout out to our nursing team, Katie Smith and Meg Tudren. They have done an outstanding job of organizing and monitoring and responding to our pool testing. We have a little over a hundred community members. I know we were talking about that earlier. That's about thirty two percent that are participating. I'm constantly sending emails out and hoping that families register. We have, you know, we've asked families to reach out directly if they can't get on. And, you know, they're, they're doing a wonderful job. Everybody in the building is tested with li- little over an hour. Go ahead, Trevor.
Is it, can you explain for the public what, what the process is of the, of the test? Is it kind of just a no smab or a, what, what do the kids do?
Yeah, so for the older kids, I think it's grade three and up, they can do it themselves and it's a Q-tip and it's five times in one nostril, five times in the other. And then they drop it in a tube. From what I understand, there hasn't been any. Negative, I guess, impact of that. Students are fine with it. Some students want to attend. They're like, why can't I sign me up? And we're like, oh, they didn't, so it's, it's interesting. All right, Mr. Modesto, what is it?
I have all these comments I can make, but none of them are appropriate. Here's a Q-tip.
Yeah.
That's great, though. Thank you. Just so people know what it's all about.
Okay. Continue.
Let's see, so, you know, another big shout out to the Treehouse Brewing Company, which is the old chaining feet, but they've provided us with. Storage space. You know, thank you to the strength and muscles of our PD department, our town highway department, our custodial staff. For moving, we've moved, I, I don't even know, I can't even make a guess, twenty truckloads of furniture from our gym to free up some. Prime real estate for learning. Because now that we're coming back five days a week, we're going to need a little bit more elbow room in our, in our classrooms and welcome, I'm assuming we're going to get more students back on too. So that's, that's been fabulous. Oh.
My God. That's great. Thank you.
That was the team today and if we didn't have them, we would still be trying to move furniture out for the next like five weeks.
Wow.
Thanks, Darius.
That's great.
And then just for some more outdoor space, we're, we're looking at different options and the town again has been. Great at working with us. John Pachurak has helped to organize. I know this is going to sound silly, but some. Stump eating, because we're looking at creating some outdoor classrooms with stump, so. And then you, I, on the. John always cracks up at that one. And then on the Read Across America, I'll let you guys read that. All the information is there.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Mr. Modesto, do you have any?
I don't have anything to add. Only one quick question. Trevor, when is town elections this year for school committee?
Yes, thank you for that lead in, so I am not running again to, to fill the seat again. I'm, I'm stepping aside to make room for. For another member of the community that wants to serve. Elections are staying on their normal schedule. Which would be the first Monday in May will be the elections this year. Town meeting obviously has moved and we believe it's June twelfth at this point, but elections will stay. In May and. I have loved so much serving with all of you and, and serving the community and I still love to be of any help I can anywhere I can, but. I've got so much to do. It's really hard to, to fit every meeting in, so I, I just really so grateful to. Serve the community for this amount of time and I'll be here through April and then make way for new, fresh ideas.
Well, thank you, Trevor. Happen to know when the deadline is for filing papers?
Yes, thank you. I believe it is the fifth, I'm almost positive the fifteenth is the last day to. Turn in your papers. You've been able to pick them up since May first. To, and then get, you know, so many signatures and then I believe it's the fifteenth is when you turn them in, another five days. I, I'm almost positive. I could. Look it up, but I think that's right.
Yes, it is March fifteenth.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Is that from our other candidate?
Yeah.
So. Yeah, in the, in the off years, I can never remember to, to bring that up. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Right.
So any, any community members or anyone that's aware of a community member that might be interested in. Participating on the school committee, please encourage them to try and get their, their papers in by the fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have nothing else, so we have no need for executive session. We're down to adjournment. Would anyone care to make a motion? Sure, we, we can sit around, chat for a while longer.
Just one quick clarification. Were we just being asked to sort of go and shake the bushes or did I understand from Trevor that somebody is interested in running?
I have, I have spoke with a, with a woman who is interested in serving and has filled out the papers, I believe, turned them in, but I do not want to discourage anybody else.
Of course not.
Yes, but I do, yes, I do know that there is somebody that's truly interested and has campaigned so far, you know, at least got the papers. But, but I think there may be two. I think there may be others that, that are looking, so. I'm excited about that.
Yes, great.
Yep, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
And we will, I'm assuming there's no discussion. All, we will go and proceed to a vote. Ken Cutterback, yes? David Sharp?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
And it's unanimous. Thank you all very much for your efforts. Good luck to all in the vaccination efforts that you're undertaking. If you are undertaking them. And we'll see you all in April.